Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 17th, 2023 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. We don't have minutes tonight, which is often the first order of business. So the first item on our agenda tonight is a resolution for SP-9149-2021, construction of two multifamily buildings at 91113 and 15 Park Avenue and 201 Brooks Avenue in the CBD Central Business District Zone. Our record is closed. This is for a concept site plan resolution, and Chris Berger from staff will be setting that up for us. Good evening, Chris.
Yeah, I'll make this brief. Staff is before you tonight with the resolution of approval for concept site plan application, SP-9149-2021, the construction of two multifamily buildings at 91113 and 15 Park Avenue and 201 Brooks Avenue. The planning commission directed staff to prepare the resolution at its May 3 meeting. And are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution with the two conditions.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on the draft resolution?
No. I mean, I think it accurately captures our discussion, our concerns, our, you know, a number of key sort of reservations and topics that must be addressed at the next phase. So I think it's, I think it's pretty clear and lays out a robust roadmap for the hurdles that have yet to be cleared.
Very good.
I just want to make note that I am an alternate tonight, and Matt Hopkins, I'm taking Matt's place.
Thanks for mentioning that. I usually try to take care of it.
That's okay, that's okay. But I was able to, to watch, so I agree that it accurately reflects the conversations.
All right, very good. Any other discussion, questions, concerns?
No.
If not, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the resolution of approval and adopt the resolution of approval for SP-9149-2021 with the two conditions.
Second?
It's moved in second. If all are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that passes 40410. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chris. Next up is a site plan for SP-9537-2023, our new single-family detached house at 16 Marquee Drive in the R90 medium-density residential zone. This is a final site plan, and presenting from staff is Sam Copeland. Good evening, Sam.
Good evening, everyone. All right. Good evening, everyone. Staff is before you, present final site plan application, SP-9537-2023, which is for the construction of a new house at 16 Marquee Drive in the R90 zone. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-168, which requires the planning commission to grant final site plan approval. The site plan application is for a new 3,247-square-foot house, and the entire limit of disturbance will be under 5,000 square feet. Here to present the application is Dave McKee and Holly Tompkins.
Good evening.
Hi, Dave McKee with Benning and Associates. I'm the land planner for the project. And this is Holly Tompkins with Crusoe Homes.
Yes.
And also the owners are in the audience, Tim and Kimberly Blatner are here as well.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So we'll just briefly scroll through some slides. This is the site plan of the property as proposed. Added some color for you, just to highlight some things, property lines in blue, the house in two-tone brown, and limited disturbance, as Sam mentioned, under 5,000 square feet in red, and green space in, in green, obviously. I've already introduced ourselves, so we'll pass on from there. This is a map of the vicinity of the property, highlighting the property in blue, give you an idea. It's on Marquee Drive on the northwest side of Marquee. It's one of two houses on that side of the road, and then we have Diamond Elementary School also in that side of the road, takes up most of that street frontage. Behind the property to the north, northwest, is HOA Open Space Property of about 5.7 acres and beyond that, Great Seneca, Central Creek State Park. Little blow-up detail of the neighborhood. This property was originally platted in 1972 as part of West Riding subdivision, so it goes back to the early 70s. The house that's currently on the property was built in 1974. This is a detail of the home site, aerial view of the property, perhaps a couple of years ago. Since that time, there's been a fire. The house was severely damaged by fire, which is mainly why we're here tonight, to get the house replaced. So this is a very current 2023 aerial photo, and here's some images of the property as it is today. So back to the site plan. Site plan mainly identifies setbacks required by zoning. There's also an easement on the property, sewer right-of-way, kind of in the back western corner of the property. So the house is sited to fit within the setbacks and also stay away from that easement area. Plan highlights, existing footprint of the home, existing home is roughly 1,200 square feet, 1,270 some square feet. The new home's supposed in footprint to be about 2,022, so larger. It's not quite as wide as existing home. It's, it's deeper than existing home, as you can see. It's a two-car garage home, so you can see the existing driveway identified on the property, which goes currently to a single-car garage. The new home will have a two-car garage, so the driveway's widened to, to fit with that width. Setbacks in the R90, this is in the R90 zones, normal setbacks, minimum 30 feet in the front, 10 for the sides, and 30 in the back. And also point out water and sewer connections. Of course, the house is already connected to water and sewer, and we intend to use existing connections for the new home. Again, in the R90 zone, so some of the zoning requirements to highlight, lot size 9,000 square feet minimum. Of course, the lots 9240 meets that requirement. Max coverage is 30%, which is 2,772, and our coverage is about 2,022, just for the house itself, so well within that max coverage. House and driveway together, 2,655, that's about 29% of the property. There is a requirement, 50% green space. We have about 71% green space. All the other requirements are met, setbacks are met. We have 30.2 feet in the front, 10.9 and 16 on the sides, 38 feet setback in the back. So that all complies with the R90 standards. And again, everything else, height, green space, everything is met with, with the plan. So here is the architecture as it's presented, the front elevation of the proposed home, again, the two-car garage. Height is indicated here, 30.7 feet. That's roughly measured. On the site plan, we identify about 30.3 feet, so, but the max allowed is 35, so well within the height allowance. And here's just a rendering, again, of the front elevation. And lastly, just the permits that we've applied for, a couple have been issued, and we're just working now to get the rest. Thank you.
Thanks. Sam, just a technical idea, what, this is a conventional Euclidian zone, for me to say, right? What brings this before us if the proposed house is within all of the constraints of the zone?
Yeah, it's a good question. So the way that the code works here is that anytime that there is no final site plan, there's no, so they're, they're proposing a new house type than what was there before. There's no final site plan for the property, so because they're making these changes, it requires them to establish a new final site plan for 16 Marquee.
Okay. And the HOA or whatever the governing neighborhood organization is, if there is one, doesn't have any design guidelines that would dictate materials?
Correct.
Stuff, whatever? It's really the prerogative of the developer in this case, or original?
Correct. Yeah, there's no, there's no approved architecture or design guidelines for this neighborhood.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
Question for staff on one of the, on one of the conditions related to water table material, whether it's stone or, or brick, and the requirement to come back in for a minor amendment. I'd just state it simply, why does staff feel that it's necessary to, it seems like a very benign, either pick A or B, why does staff feel it's necessary to come back in for an amendment for, you know, can we approve both materials as an option tonight and make the applicant's life one step easier?
Yeah, that's a good question. So on the screen right here, you see that they're showing the brick-water table. Underneath it, they mention that there is the option for stone. So we just wanted to call out that, yeah, staff's okay with both. However, if they were to go with the stone option instead of the brick, they could just do the amendment to final site plan option, so that way they can revise the elevations to show stone instead of brick.
I'm just asking, because, you know, we've seen that before on a number of developments where, especially on bigger, bigger projects, where you approve an option for three different water table, and it's up to the, the builder to do that without filing additional paperwork.
So typically, the final site plan and the final architecture approval of the commission needs to match with the building permit. What you reference is typically done, like blanket architecture for new development, and those who come in for a re-site at a staff level, we basically lock them down on the final architecture. They chose stone or brick. Again, as Sam said, we don't have a problem with either material. We just want to make sure in the day that the final architecture that's approved does match with the building permit.
Okay. Great. Okay. Any other questions? All right, so we, I'm sorry, okay. We'll ask, we'll ask for comments from the public.
Yeah, sorry. You're asking comments from the public.
Yeah, beat me to it. So we're, we're going to ask for comments from the public, but just before you do that, we have obviously people in person as well as online. So, and we'll start with those in person, then we'll go to the online. But before we do that, tech team, if you would play the how-to video for those online if they're, if they care to comment.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Great. So we will start with in-person. Please step up to the dais. You'll have three minutes, and tell us your name and neighborhood or address, and what you have on your mind.
Sure. Hello, my name is Michael Ray, and I'm in 14 Marquise Drive. I'm the property right next to 16 Marquise, and I just had a question. With the construction, I know that for 16 Marquee, they're in a higher flood zone than I am in 14 Marquee, and I just want to make sure that with the new construction, that no water is redirected from the 16 Marquee into 14 Marquee as construction is done and then as the final, has, after construction is complete, I want to make sure, yeah, water's not going from 16 Marquee into 14 Marquee. That's my concern. Thank you.
All right, and we'll get all the questions in, and then let the applicant's team or staff address those at the, at the end. Thank you. All right, anybody else? Mr. Sesma.
Good evening, Mike Sesma. I live in West Riding, so I hadn't planned to talk about this issue, but it's nice to see the, the property move forward in terms of new development. It is a sad story how we got to this point, but hopefully it'll be a, a new home that'll be a standout in West Riding. It'll be a standout just because of the location at the corner of Marquee and Cullinan, but it'll also be a standout because of the, the, the architecture is a little bit, little bit more traditional, neo-traditional than the suburban models that currently exist in the neighborhood. So the only thing, the, the discussion about the, the brick versus stone, I would remind everybody that almost every home in West Riding is a brick veneer, at least on the first level, whether one story or two. So I think that to keep in mind, to make it more harmonious with the neighborhood. But we're glad, I, I know I can speak for a lot of my neighbors who are very happy to see this property come to some new redevelopment. We look forward to having new residents, new family there. I know Mike here and his family are going to be very excited to have new neighbors. And I, the other remark is that the, there are no two-car garages in West Riding that I'm aware of. So this will be, that'll be another reason it stands out, so. But anyway, I encourage you to move forward with this. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mike. All right, anybody else here in the chambers that would like to comment on this application? All right, let's go to the, those folks watching online, and I see a handup from Alan Fraser. And let tech team turn that on. Can you go ahead and say something? Let's make sure you're on.
Hi, my name is Alan Fraser. Can you hear me?
Sure can, thanks.
I'm in a remote location down in Florida, and I just have a particular interest in this site, along with Mr. Sesma and others, Julian Schenke. I think the applicant has done an admirable job once the procedure was fully understood, and I thank the city very much for getting this project underway. It's, it's important to our community to have this unfortunate incident taken care of and replaced with this kind of a building. And I applaud the applicant for staying with it. I applaud the city for taking care of this problem. I agree with Mr. Sesma's comment about the brick. I don't agree with his comment about two-car garages. We have one, and a lot of them. Wish there were more. There's even a two-car carport right next door on the other side of this proposed site. In any event, I think this is a terrific project, and I look forward to its actual implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see a handup from M. Sickman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Hi, my name's Mary Ann Sickman. I live at 803 Hope Court, and I just want to agree with Mike Sesma's comments that we're really glad to see this project move forward. I run by this house every day, and it's a sad sort of story for West Riding that this even happened. Really happy to see new neighbors move in. I think West Riding is an awesome community, and I'm sure everybody will welcome them. However, the brick versus stone is definitely something that I would hope the new owners would consider. We've had actually quite, well, we've had at least two renovations, what I would call pretty major renovations in West Riding in the last, I don't know, two to three years. One of them is on Diamond Drive, right when you come into West Riding, and they actually put a second story on, on a house that was originally not, didn't have a, a visual second story, and the aesthetic is pretty pleasing. It's literally right when you come into West Riding. It is a different aesthetic than the rest of West Riding, but it kind of melds in. On the opposite corner of where this house is going to be renovated, if you go down, I don't know the streets, unfortunately enough, I've lived here many years, but if you go on the, around the corner and down the street, there was a major renovation, and they did a absolutely beautiful job to that house. There is a little bit of stone, but it's not a significant amount of stone, and it kind of melds in to the whole aesthetic of the community. I would just ask that that be a consideration in terms of the stone and the brick, because as Mike Sesma says, West Riding is a, is a brick community. That's all I have to say. Thanks for listening to me.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Appreciate the comments. I see a handup from John Wassell.
Can you hear me?
Sure can, thanks for dialing.
This is John Wassell, 15 Keystone Drive. I'm sorry to take an opposing view on everything that's said tonight, but I've been very unhappy about the situation about that house. It burned over two years ago. The owners took possession, it closed on contract a year ago, and nothing has been done in a year. I know this is a site planning thing. I'm sure it's going to be a wonderful house, but I have one question in my great disappointment with both the city's handling of this and the new property owners. When the heck is that going to be demolished? It's a simple question. Just tell me when it's going to be demolished. Thank you.
And, and I think we can answer that. It was part of the presentation, but we'll get to that at the end with answering questions. So thanks for your comments. I don't see any other hands up, so, and, and if somebody does decide they want to speak, we have a few more minutes. So while we're checking that again, two fundamental questions, Sam. So on the elevation of 14, the site at 14 and the elevation of the site at 16, and concerns about stormwater runoff, what, what can you offer for that?
Yeah, I mean, that will typically happen during the building permit process. That's something that we'll be taking a look at. At this stage, we are primarily focused on construction, location, making sure setbacks are met, knowing that most of that's taken care of further on with the building permit.
Okay. So to paraphrase, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but during the permitting, there will be a review of stormwater, at least in terms of runoff on the site. Obviously, the larger facilities are where they are. This is a single site, but some attention paid to things like silt fences and so forth during construction. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's typically done with it. I'm making a note, though, that, you know, when it does come in, that we pay extra careful attention to it.
Okay. And I apologize, I didn't write down who made that comment, but whoever, okay. You can always contact us and get more information during construction if you feel there's any concerns, and they can come out and try to mitigate anything you see while, while it's happening.
Okay, and, and after, if, for whatever reason?
Come up to the, I'm, I'm happy to take the question, but just come up to the mic so we can capture it.
Just to follow up, and, and after construction is complete, if I start noticing, say, water in my basement, should, should I just reach out to the city?
You can reach out to the city, and we can look into it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then the second question that came up was, oh, the, the status of the demolition permit and timing. I noticed there was something on the presentation about the application, but if somebody could comment on that.
I guess I can. The demo permit was applied for, and it has been issued, and I have been told that there was a timing requirement that the demo was supposed to take place by or at least start, and so that, that would be something to confirm this evening if, if that information is available. But yes, we already have the demo permit, and we need to go through this process and then complete the grading and building permit process, and, and it will, then we'll get there. Yes.
Okay, so Sam, any, any insight on what that looks like?
Demo permit's been issued, so they can demo the building whenever they're ready. Permits are typically due for six months, but we do have an option to extend those if necessary. So again, if the permit has expired, we get to talk to our commercial, our permitting managers to see if it can be extended. But from my knowledge, the, the permit has been issued, and the building could be demoed. I believe I'm correct, the homeowner and their, they're here, so they got to confirm with me, but they are looking to demo it in, in, with the construction of the home. They don't want to demo it and leave a hole with it fenced off, and then have to come back and build a home a couple of months later.
Okay. So broad brush, does that look like a year from now, six months from now, two maybe?
Yeah, you, you can come up.
Yeah.
The plan is to begin all of this as soon as the building permit is issued. So if that's in, let's say, two days, 30 days, it'll start after that.
Well, first of all, I'd like to speak to, I think it was just-
If you could just introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, I'm Kimberly Blatner, and my husband, Tim Blatner.
Sorry I was late. I had to get the kids to bed. The babysitter just come.
So, yeah, I just, I thank everyone, and we, we live in West Riding currently ourselves, obviously. We love the community and thank everyone for their support and concerns with this process, and, and the city especially, Sam for being super helpful, and Gregory, me and has been helpful, and especially Greg Dennison as well. And I do want to say also, within a week of us purchasing the property, we did apply, or not apply, but ask about the process for getting a demo permit for, which I didn't realize it would be such a long process, and at which point we immediately started looking for a builder. And again, our goal was never to just create a home, a hole in the ground. And in regards to the stone or the brick, we did review, looking at different houses in the area, and then we drove around our neighborhood, and while I was like, oh, I love the look of stone, I was like, it wouldn't fit in with our neighborhood. So we've already selected a, a brick color with Crusoe Homes, and I also have pictures of other houses in the neighborhood, and right across the street from us is already a two-car garage there, so, because we didn't want to be the first doing anything, and there's other houses in the neighborhood that have similar trying girls in their archis, architecture as well, because we wanted to choose something that worked with our future plans, but also was fitting in with the architecture of the neighborhood as well as we could without going all the way back to the original 1960s or 78 builds.
And in terms of timeline, I mean, we're, we're hoping within the next week or two to begin the entire process. We want to demo the house before June would be ideal, and then immediately after that start, start building.
Okay, great answer. So I appreciate that, and the intent is there. It looks like the paperwork's in place, so barring any other sort of-
Oh, sure. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. One more question to address our future neighbor, Mike, and I'm blanking on the name of it, but that was a big question that I asked Ryan Dager was, what about, because it rains, I grew up in California, but it rains a lot in Maryland, and where, how many, I'm blanking on the names, gutters, where, how many gutters, where are the location of the gutters, what happens to the rain? And again, I blank on the name of it, but there's going to be something built underground that-
Pressure?
No, 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 it's a different word.
Well, I tell you what, that, that, I appreciate that, and you don't need to worry about being too technical.
Yeah, but so I, I don't know if they have that terminology, but I'll, I'll send it to you when I find you again.
We've, we've been trying to chat with the neighbors when we can to update them.
It's been-
Okay.
Anyway, thank you all so much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So let's see, did we get all the questions answered? I think we did.
I believe so.
Okay. Sam, what's the recommendation, please?
Yeah, so just one quick note, the homeowner reached out to me after the packet was posted and noticed that one of the bathroom windows is missing from the proposed elevations. Staffs have the opinion-
No windows then, right?
Well, staffs have the opinion that this is pretty minor, so one of the conditions does address planned cleanups. So staffs have the opinion that the addition of this one window is minor enough to be cleaned up with condition one.
Fair enough.
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant SP-9537-2023 final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and Sections 24-171 of the city's zoning ordinance with three conditions of approval.
All right. Any questions on the recommendation? Great to see resolution to this, this long, long saga, and thank you for bringing in a quality project, too, by the way, into the city. Appreciate that.
Out of the ashes rises a phoenix. Good luck.
Wow, okay.
My humanity's backwards.
All right, if there are no other concerns, questions? Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and staff report findings and recommendation, grant SP-9537-2023 final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the city's zoning ordinance with the three conditions of approval.
Second?
It's moved in second. If all are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks all, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Completed project. All right, that takes us to, from the commission. Sharon, may I start with you?
So I wasn't here the last time to thank John Schlichting for the Kettlins. Your visit that we had just a few weeks ago, and it went off very well. You all missed it, but John and Marina Corey did a discussion about the past and the future of Kettlins. It was wonderful. I want to thank John for that publicly. It was not recorded, unfortunately. No live on memoriam, sorry.
And I would have loved to have been there, but I was traveling, so.
Yes, I, I understand, but I just wanted to thank John publicly, because it was really terrific. He actually went through some of the, the things that we as a commission know about that's happening, Lake Forest Mall, and then the two projects in the Kettlins, but John could then tell our neighbors and friends of that I didn't have to, which is great.
What's happening with Lake Forest Mall?
It's closed.
I love so much that. And then we are, we are also having Kettlins Under the Lights, which is September, which is, um, July, I mean, June, gosh, June 17th. It's coming up in a couple of weeks, so it's Saturday, and we're expecting- It's coming up in a couple weeks, so it's Saturday, and we're expecting 7,000 people to be there. It's going to be double the size.
What time's it start?
Like six-ish.
Guarantee the weather, though.
Two bands this time, and I hope the weather's as good as it was last year because it was perfect.
It was perfect.
So come out, bring your friends, because we have to sell a lot of alcohol to Ricky and so on. So, should be a fun night.
All right, thanks for that.
June 17th, sorry.
Danny, what you got going on?
I'm just looking forward to seeing everybody this Saturday at the Gatlinburg Book Festival. I'll be introducing three authors, and I'm so excited because I'm on the commission, I mean, excuse me, the committee, and it's a whole year worth of planning, and this is just so, we're so excited to get to the day. So I hope to see all of you all out there. And I'll see Megan.
Yep, she'll be there. And I'll be there, too. I have the honor of introducing three authors as well, but all at once. I'm introducing a panel, so I can, I can cram it all in in one, one into. Lloyd, anything tonight?
Nothing.
Phil, anything tonight? Okay, all right. Greg, what's up with our calendar?
So first, I want to let everyone know, so June 1st, we are going to have, we're going to be hosting two virtual forums with the public to go over our consultant's zone codes, diagnostics of our city code, zoning ordinance more specifically. We're going to start at one at noon and one at seven o'clock in the evening. No registration required, there are links on the project page, you can go there, click on them, join the meetings, either one that you want to go to. And the diagnostics report is on the city's project page as well, so you can go look at that. It's about 80 something pages, pretty beefy, but it's, it's good, it's pretty in-depth, it covers a lot of the concerns that we've, we've even acknowledged with our code now. So I would encourage you, if you have time, to definitely go on the project page and take a look at that document that our consultant put together.
Great.
Okay. And then upcoming meetings, you have a, sorry, the next joint public hearing is on the housing element, that's June 5th, and then there's a joint work session on the 355 BRT, June 12th, and our next meeting is June 7th.
Busy, busy June.
Yes.
Excellent, thanks Greg. Mr. Schlichting, Director Schlichting?
I have a couple of things this evening. First of all, I have an update, especially for Danny, on the intersection at Watkins and Papa Road. I reached out to Public Works this morning, and Brian Fields got back to me that they have a traffic engineering consultant, DCI, lined up to perform a study of the intersection with the work scheduled to kick off soon after the start of the FY '24 budget on July 1. They pushed it to FY '24 based on some other priority projects for '23. But they're ready to go July 1.
I'm glad there's some movement. Thank you very much.
And then secondly, speaking of Lake Forest Mall, I just wanted to let you all know that the kickoff meeting for the schematic development plan, and as we understand it, they are still intending to do one schematic development plan for the entire 103 acres. That kickoff meeting is this coming Thursday, or we do tomorrow, and sometime next week they will announce the architect as well. So we'll find out.
When you say kickoff, so that's when they're going to meet with staff to kind of get the framework for how to put it all together?
That's correct.
It's probably going to stretch well into the fall at this point, yeah.
I'm sure it will. It's a lot of engineering to do for 103 acres.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, anything else, Frank? Thanks for being here.
No, thank you.
All right, if there's, oh, go ahead.
One question, the annexation for the Walnut, Walnut Hill, Walnut Grove Shopping Centers, that was all over social media today with all the, Moco Show had it all over. What is the timeline for annexation? Have they formally filed that?
They have formally filed, they filed it several months ago, but it got introduced, so the public process started this past Monday. The mayor and council introduced it. The county council is, should be reviewing it, nothing's carved in stone yet, but the county council should be reviewing it prior to the August recess, and then the public hearing is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, September 5th. And that's not a joint public hearing, that's just the mayor and council. And then we have very tentatively at this point, policy discussion potentially in October, so, and that's when it would actually happen.
All right, very good. Anything else from anyone? If not, have a good evening, we're adjourned.